The views, information and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives or its employees.
Welcome to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council held in council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, April 22nd, 2024. To begin with, do we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held April 8th, 2024? Do I have this motion, please?
Your worship, I'd make a motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting and the strategic planning priorities committee meeting held April 8th, 2024 be accepted as presented.
Second.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry it unanimously. It is to be noted in the minutes, Council Morsette is absent at this meeting tonight, but we still have Korn. Public hearings and notices, they're our first off additions to the agenda. And also, Mr. Warren is away also, and in his place Laura Morsette is our large, Laura Missall. Laura Missall, boy, getting the names here. Uh, Laura, Joe Biden is up here. Laura Missall is been in here, in his place. Acting manager, anything? Any additions? Laura, additions? Okay. Counsel? Nothing, seeing none, moving forward. No public hearings and notices. Tonight, we have two delegations and proclamations here, I guess, tonight. And we will ask you to maybe say a word or two afterwards. The first one, we had with, is the Mental Health Week, May 8th to the 12th. So just give me one second, if you would be so kind. Whereas inaugurated by CMHA in 1951, May 6th to the 12th, 2024 marks the 73rd annual Mental Health Week in Canada. And mental health is not just the absence of mental illness. Mental health is about finding a balance in all aspects of your life. There is no health without mental health. And Mental Health Week is a social change campaign to educate the public and shift beliefs and perceptions about mental health. It helps promote behaviors, attitudes that foster well-being, support good mental health and create a culture of understanding, acceptance. And the Canadian Mental Health Association in Weyburn is committed to the mental health of our community. We want our families, friends and neighbors to have the same opportunities breaking down barriers of mental health and mental illness by offering support and programs. So please visit www.weyburn.cmh.a.ca. Therefore, I now, I Marcel Roy, Mayor of the city of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim May 6th to the 12th, 2024 to be Mental Health Week in Weyburn, and I urge all citizens to take part in the events to celebrate this week. Go ahead. If you would, please, say a few words.
Thank you so much for having me today. Mental Health Week provides CMHA an opportunity to highlight our programs and services. We offer thanks to those who support us as well as recognize our many partners and funders. With, we host different events throughout Mental Health Week to raise awareness as well as to profile a mental health in our community. This year's Mental Health Week's theme is Compassion Connects. It's a call to be kind. We have a, we have the capacity to be compassionate and we know that doing so makes an enormous difference. This year's Mental Health Week is centered on the healing power of compassion. Compassion is free, accessible and something that can be learned. When we show compassion, we acknowledge a commonality between others and ourselves regardless of our social or personal identities. We establish trust, strengthen relationships and cultivate a sense of community. This year's CMHA has three different events along with an awareness initiative that we are putting, that we have planned. So we are sending out a call to action, asking our community to help us raise awareness and show their support of mental health by hanging their door hangers throughout Mental Health Week. And those will be provided through the newspaper for our community. We also invite our community members to attend our events held throughout the week, which includes our mayor's luncheon on May 7th, a self-care workshop on May 8th and our used book sale on May 8th and 9th. If anybody wants more information about these events, please contact, contact us at the branch or visit cmhaweyburn, sorry, weyburn.cmh.ca or follow us on social media at @cmhaweyburn. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and if we could just have a picture here, please? The second one we have here is Envision Counseling and Support and Victims and Survivors of Crime Week, May 12th to the 18th. The proclamation is this, Envision Counseling and Support Centre Incorporated has been providing therapeutic counseling and support services all across southeastern Saskatchewan to those who have been impacted by crime and abuse in their lives, as well as to individuals, childrens, couples and families who are going through a difficult situation or event. Envision Counseling and Support Centre Incorporated is celebrating the 30th anniversary, long time victims and survivors of crime week. In 2022, Saskatchewan had one of the highest provincial rates of police reported family violence and intimate partner violence, similar to police reported crime all over. Envision Counseling and Support Centre Incorporated would like to recognize and honor the individuals who have been impacted by violence and crime in their lives and also those who support those individuals as they experience move forward from their traumas. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor, City of Weyburn, ask you hereby proclaim May 12th to the 18th, 2024, on the occasion of the 30th anniversary of Envision Counseling and Support Centre Incorporated as Victims and Survivors of Crime Week. Would you like to step forward and identify yourself and talk about and say a couple of statements?
Thank you so much, yes. My name is Ray Vender, I am the communication specialist here with Envision Counseling and Support Centre and I've brought my partner over here, Edna, she is one of our counselling coordinators. We are very, very thankful and honored to have been a pillar of support throughout the communities across southeast Saskatchewan for 30 years now as we celebrate our 30th anniversary. So we are conjoining that alongside Victims and Survivors of Crime Week, which honors those who have been impacted by violence and crime in their lives, but also those who do the tireless work supporting these individuals as they move forward past their traumas. We are hosting an open house for the community of Weyburn on May 31st. So we welcome everyone to come out to just show their support for all of these individuals, including those who have been impacted, as well as those who are doing the support services throughout our, our community, such as ourselves, our counselors here at Envision, as well as the EMS, the fire, police services, victim services and all of those wonderful support services that we do have across our communities. So thank you for allowing us this opportunity and please join us on May 31st as we welcome the community into our space.
And where is that, what location is that?
That will be at 123rd Street at the Envision office up on the hill.
And what times?
From 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM, we will be hosting. There will be dainties and coffees provided for the community as well. Do we have any other questions about the event? Perfect, and there will be more information following on our social media as well as our website closer to the date.
Okay, if you would just be so kind, a picture and then.
Yes, you're so excited, yes, you just joined the chamber, you're just so thankful. Thank you so much.
There's no reports of standing committees, there's no consent agenda. We have motions, traffic signal light installation, if you would, Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. So this is for 2024 traffic signal replacement. So location one, government road and First Avenue, traffic signal lights require replacement due to the aging and obsolete infrastructure. Location two is 16th Street and First Avenue intersection, which is currently controlled by a four-way stop, but based on the results of our recent traffic study, it was determined that traffic signal lights would be more effective at improving the level of service compared to retaining the four-way stop. It was also determined that the previous pavement was experiencing significant rutting related to the continuous starting and stopping of traffic. Traffic signal lights housed with camera detection will significantly reduce this pavement shoving and preserve the investment of the 2023 pavement upgrades. Budget for the traffic light replacements is $350,000 and includes the purchase, delivery and installation of all new infrastructure associated with the traffic signals. So March 21st, a request for proposal was posted on the city's online bidding portal bids and tenders, SaaS tenders and the city's website. Proposals were to be received by the city of Weyburn by April 9th at 4:00 PM. And a total of three proposals were received. The bud, the bids are summarized below and include PST, so Can Traffic Global Electric and Triple AEC. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, had similar project experience, the required qualifications and to ensure the project's delivery schedule could be met. All of the proposals meet the full requirements with Can Traffic Service holding the lowest bid. So the city will pre-purchase a new traffic controller, the traffic signal poles, anchor bolts, arms and signal lights, a head, heads directly from the supplier and estimated cost is $72,000 per location. The scope of services in this RFP includes all label and labor and civil works for the installation of the city supplied traffic signal infrastructure, which includes a replacement of the corresponding underground power supply and new foundations for the poles and traffic controller cabinet. The engineering department applied for funding from the SGI Provincial Traffic Safety Fund for the maximum allowable funding, funded limited of $100,000 for the 16th Street and First Avenue traffic signal installation. Grants will be awarded on June 30th, 2024. Location two will be awarded following notification of a grant funding. So at this time, we're not looking to award location two because it would be dependent on that funding, that, and we're waiting on that notification. So it is recommended that the traffic signal replacement at location one, Government Road and First Avenue be awarded to Can Traffic Services Limited for $206,465.74, including PST.
Little motion, please.
Your worship, I would move that the traffic signal replacement at location one, Government Road and First Avenue be awarded to Can Traffic Services Limited for $206,465.74, including PST.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion.
Thanks, your worship, Jen, just to be clear, I think what you said was, if we don't get grant funding, we won't do this project, or to be determined?
To be determined.
Okay. Good, thanks.
Yeah, Jen, I just have a question, so how is the camera detection lights, how is that different than a normal light?
So normally, right now, our lights are just timer based. So we will set a certain time on them and basically the light will stay on for this amount of time. With a detection, it will allow it to actually run based on how traffic is flowing. We are one of the few cities of our size that don't currently have that, where we run all of our traffic based on timers. So it is moving forward where there's kind of various levels of technology that can be put into these, but we would be looking at one that would have the detection so that the lights could adjust based on the traffic.
So typically in, say in the middle of the night especially, or later in the day when there isn't any traffic on 16th Street going north and south and the trucks on First Avenue will be just.
Yep, they would keep rolling and then to, if in the middle of the night, somebody is pulling up on 16th and there's nobody on first, the light would adjust and it would turn green on 16th. So yeah, that is one of the things that we are looking at with our new lights, is to add that kind of technology to them.
Awesome, sounds good, thank you.
And also are they interconnected? So that they, so that one on 16th Street, they show that someone's coming, it kicks on and then it tells signals down and tells the other one.
That will be the goal eventually, is to get them on all of our lights. Right now, obviously, we're kind of looking at it as we put new ones in there, but they would flow.
Interconnected by timing, or is it just the cameras gonna keep them?
The technology does that, the camera does it, yeah.
Your worship, Jennifer, I think that is an excellent idea to have the timer on there because the traffic at those, or the cameras on there, because the traffic is inconsistent about what comes where. We are going to get the grant though and build those ones. I would suggest that we informally and unofficially refer to them as the Counselor Richard Mickle Memorial Traffic Lights.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion, other than the name for the naming, which will go to a different meeting?
Yeah, we'll bring that far as well.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry it immediately. Immediately, carry it unanimously. The message board, RFP.
All right, thank you. So this is for trailer mounted message boards. So the public work depart, public works department requires two trailer mounted message boards to assist with traffic control and construction zone safety. Public Works employees are in the line of fire daily, working directly in traffic and are seeing more close calls when dealing with traffic. These message boards can be, also be used in emergency situations like flooding to shut down roads in areas of the city. Public Works have been allotted a department budget for capital purchases of $50,000 for these trailer mounted message boards. On March 22nd, the RFP was posted on the city's new bidding portal bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, city website for two trailer mounted message boards. Quotations were to be received by the city by April 10th at 1:00 PM and a total of seven tenders received. The bids are summarized below and include PST, as you can see. Based on a full bid assessment, ATS traffic meets all the tender and operational requirements as outlined by the city. The OP traffic VMS-400-1P has 350 watt solar panels as compared to the similar price units that only, that have only 85 watt per solar panel. Also, the VMS-400-1P has a hydraulic mass lifting system as compared to a manual crank. ATS traffic is the most local out of all the bids based in Regina for parts and repairs. So it is recommended that the two trailer mounted message boards be awarded to ATS traffic at a bid price of $41,829.36, including PST and delivery.
Motion, please. Your worship, I move that two trailer mounted message boards be awarded to ATS traffic at a bid price of $41,829.63, including PST and delivery.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Delivery time?
I will have to confirm that, but I don't believe it was a long delivery time.
So it'll be here before, when we start all the work on First Avenue, hopefully?
Hopefully.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry it unanimously. Introduction bylaws, bylaw 2024, 3479, the lane closure.
A request has been received from Ross Veterinary Services for the closure and sale of lane legally described as lane 10, Plan T1166, Extension Zero. The reason for the proposed purchase and closure is to allow for the consolidation with lots 11 through to 26, block 219, Plan T1166, for the development of a new veterinary clinic. After council gave first reading on March 25th, 2024, regular council meeting, public notices went out in accordance with the city's public notice policy. Notices were advertised the 3rd of April and the 10th, 2024. Additions of the Weyburn Review posted at the city hall and the city website. Additionally, neighborhood notices were mailed to all property owners within a 75 meter radius of the property. No responses were received. We have two options, council options. Option one, council gives second and third reading to bylaw 2024-3479, being a bylaw to authorize the closure and sale of the lane legally described as street slash lane 10, Plan T1166, Extension Zero. Or option two, council refuses to give second and third reading to bylaw 2024-3479 and direct administration to advise the applicant of the refusal based on the following reasons. Any officer making a motion for refusal shall provide reasons for the refusal. So our staff recommendation, option one, the council gives second and third reading for bylaw 2024-3479 to authorize the closure and sale of the lane legally described as lane 10, Plan T1166, Extension Zero.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd make the motion that bylaw 2024-3479, a bylaw to authorize the closure and sale of the lane legally described as street, lane 10, Plan T1166, Extensions Zero, be read a second time.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carry it unanimously. Final reading?
Your worship, I'd move the bylaw 2024-3479, a bylaw to authorize the closure and sale of lane legally described as street, lane 10, Plan T1166, Extents Zero, be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Seeing no discussion, quiet, call the question, all in favor? Carry it unanimously. And that bylaw is passed. Now, bylaw 2024, 3480, mill rate factor base tax increase. Mr. Van Betchu.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that this item be tabled until the next council meeting to be held in, second week in May.
Your worship, by law second, Counselor Van Betchu's motion.
Discussion. This is for to get more in-depth look at this stuff?
Yes, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carry it unanimously. Bylaw 2024, 3481, mill rates for taxation. Mr. Van Betchu.
Your worship, I would like to make the motion this also be tabled until they, for further discussion until the next council meeting to be held the first week in May.
Your worship, I will second this one as well.
Discussion. Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carry it unanimously. So those will be tabled for now. Home-based business application in new business at 408 Assiniboia Street, playing in development, Shirley.
An application has been received from Dylan Cam to operate a tailoring and clothing alterations home-based business of their residents at 408 Assiniboia Street, legally described as lot 2 and 3, block 74, Plan 54840, located in the R2 zone. This would be considered a controversial issue or controversial use as the business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. The proposed days and hours of operation are weekly from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The applicant anticipates minimal traffic increase and driveway parking is available. The zoning bylaw requires that controversial home-based businesses, which involve clients attending the home to go through the neighborhood, notice process and receive council approval. Neighborhood notices were mailed out on April 4th, 2024 to all neighbors within 50 meters of the applicant's home. Residents receiving the notice were given the opportunity to comment on the application and no concerns or objections were received. Home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning the landowners do have the right to undertake the use in accordance with the bylaw unless provisions of the bylaw are specifically contravened. Home-based businesses generally must meet the following provisions. Be incidental to the use of the premise as a residence. Be compatible with residential uses. Be limited in extent in terms of volume material, of materials sold and number of clients. Not substantially increase the volume of traffic and not detract from the residential character of the zone. The use identified would be considered a controversial occupation under section 5119 of the zoning bylaw as clients will be directed to the home. Staff have reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets the requirements in the zoning bylaw. Counsel option one, council approves home-based business permit 2024.007 at 408 Assiniboia Street, subject to the following conditions. No person other than a resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in any media. The home-based business shall not occupy more than 25% of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit. The face of any home business, home-based business sign onsite must not exceed 0.092 meter squared and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. This permit is only valid for the above address and is non-transferable to another address. Reapplication will be required if the business moves locations. Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review to ensure compliance. The applicant's driveway shall be used for off-street parking of clients and the city of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home-based business. Option two, refusal of the home-based business permit 2024.007 at 408 Assiniboia Street for the following reasons. A permitted use must have a reason for refusal. Staff recommendation, option one, that council approves home-based business permit 2024.007 at 408 Assiniboia Street, subject to the conditions listed above.
Worship, I'd make the motion, the council approves home-based business permit 2024.007 at 408 Assiniboia Street, subject to the conditions outlined by the administration's presentation.
I'll second that motion, your worship. Discussion.
Great job, Shirley, thanks for presenting that. Just, I just want to confirm, the notice to the neighbors went out April 4th. How long do they get traditionally to respond to that? Maybe you don't know that off the top of your head, but.
I believe it's 20 days.
20 days, yeah, perfect, good, and none were received.
No.
Thank you.
I always find it to kind of warm my heart to see that another person is being entrepreneurial spirit and willing to go out there and work and make their money on their own and that's what drives small businesses, what drives economic development and that's what drives so many of the things and it's very good to see, especially when it comes into. Especially when it comes to tailoring, I remember, again, I don't want to sound like Biden going after this story, but Manitoba years ago, that was how they actually had a very large business. A company was making outdoor clothing, and they would go around and drop it off to different individual people at different farms, and they would drop off the patterns, drop off the material, and then come back and pick it up a week later with all these different coats. And that was, that was their scheme. So it's good to see home-based tailoring going on, so very good. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Well, Shirley, thank you for your presentations here. We now go back to Jennifer Wilkinson, rural water hookup.
Yeah, thank you. The Wayburn Utility Board has requested approval to hook up one new commercial water service. The owners have confirmed satisfactory sewage disposal arrangements. The commercial water service is for a retail store. Based on estimated demand, we can handle the additional requirements on our water system. So it is recommended the following requests be approved for a commercial water service, Wayburn Livestock Feed Limited, Lot four, Block one, Eviston Park. The twenty-five thousand dollar connection fee does apply to this commercial application.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the request of the Wayburn Utility Board for access to the rural pipelines for the applicant be approved, subject to fulfilling the City of Wayburn, Wayburn Utility Board commercial hookup requirements for Wayburn Livestock Feed Limited at Lot four, Block one, Eviston Park.
Second? I'll second that motion, your worship. Discussion. Richard?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Jen. The connection fee, you bet. Also, all of the installation costs are associated with this are on the landowner or the utility board. City of Wayburn has no, no responsibility for connection fees or anything like that.
No, so we have that connection fee to allow them to connect to our system, but the Wayburn Utility Board would handle the connection from their business into their pipeline. So those costs are between the landowner and the Wayburn Utility Board.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? It's good to see that we, as city, are able to provide services to outside city people, our water and sewer, our water services, I should say, which is part of our push towards being this good community member within the whole region. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Acting City Manager, Miss Al, you have the special occasion application.
Yes, thank you. So a special occasion liquor permit, permits are required by the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority for selling and serving alcohol that is not held in a commercially permitted establishment. Written municipal approval must be submitted, respecting all outdoor functions. A special occasion application has been received from Outlaw Buckers and Oil Kings for an upcoming rodeo running in conjunction with the twenty twenty-four Saskatchewan Oil and Gas Show in Wayburn. The application is to sell alcohol during the rodeo taking place on the Wayburn Eggs Society Exhibition Grounds in the location not covered through the twenty twenty-four Saskatchewan Oil and Gas Show SLGA permit during the following times, June fourth, twenty twenty-four, from twelve PM to eight PM. The Leisure Services Department has reviewed the application. All required information was included, and there were no concerns with the application. So the recommendation is that council provides approval for the Outlaw Buckers and Oil Kings to make an application to the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority to sell alcohol during their event held at the Wayburn Exhibition Grounds during the following times, June fourth, twenty twenty-four, from twelve PM to eight PM.
Thanks, your worship. I will be careful when I say, council provide approval to the Outlaw Buckers and Oil Kings to make an application to the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority to sell alcohol during the twenty twenty-four Outlaw Bucker and Oil Kings rodeo, June fourth, at the Wayburn Eggs Society grounds.
I will second that motion, your worship. Yes, this year, sitting on the oil board, this year, they are doing it a little bit different. They're going to have a rodeo before their main, their initial supper going on. So that's just where this permit comes in. So this is kind of good to see how this all, a little bit of different venue and what they're doing here for the oil show. This is, and I believe Mr. Stephen Harper is even going to be down here for this oil show, so which is quite an issue one. With that being said, any other discussion on this? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Quires and announcements.
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to welcome Shirley. Great job tonight. You had a couple of big ones there. Also, just thank Laura Massal, Acting City Manager tonight, and Christine Paul for taking our minutes tonight as we're a little bit down a few folks, so appreciate your help, everybody jumping in.
Could you also mention our awards at SUMA for George Kerr and Danette Richter?
I hadn't.
No, but would you please?
I would, sure. Yeah, so last week at the Saskatchewan Municipalities Association Annual Convention, I suppose it's called, we had two city employees, one former, one current, receive long service awards. George Kerr, who everybody knows, forty-seven years with the City of Wayburn, so unreal. I wasn't even born when George started working for the City of Wayburn, so that was awesome. Thank you. And also, Danette Richter, our most recent city clerk, thirty years, I believe, was Danette's award. So congratulations. I was born when Danette started, not when George started, so thank you, yeah.
Any other questions?
I would just like confirmation on the age that Counselor Richard has claimed.
I think, I think we've established that my math isn't always bang on, so this one could be a rounding error.
There'll be, there'll be provision of, he'll have to produce his birth certificate on the next meeting here, just to show. So there's, the, as we said, oil show coming up, June fourth, fifth, and sixth. That will be here, so that is something to be marked on the calendar. We have the mayor's luncheon, mental health luncheon, about eleven forty-five. On May seventh, that will be there. There is also the Ronald McDonald's. I was contacted to be there for the Ronald McDonald Day, I think the following day, at all day, May eighth, at McDonald's for raising money for the Ronald McDonald House in Regina. So that is another kind of some more of the events that are happening within our city, put a few of the events. So we are, there's tremendous amount of stuff going on. You just have to really reach out and look and see what is out there. There's a tremendous amount of activities going on. Mr. Jenk, you look like you have something to say.
I do not, your worship, but in deference to Counselor Richard's joke about George Kerr's incredible forty-seven years, Counselor Morissette and I can tell that joke and not be lying about it. So that is an incredible achievement and a wonderful contribution to our city.
That is. And some of his, he was here both in the city and the volunteer fire department too, so he served both ways. With that being said, there's no notice of motions, and with that, we will call the German. Thank you.